Motion open.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. We have a quick public hearing at 7:15 tonight. I'm going to dive into some new business. We have a... Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
We have review and approval of commercial clam permit application for the 2020 season. This is for William Poole and clam permit. To keep this simple, I'm going to make a motion. I move to approve the commercial clam permit application for the 2020 season for William Poole and 41 Main Street Byfield, and also that the chair can execute the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
So what's the backstory behind this? He is a resident of the town of Newbury?
This is a different person.
Okay.
This is a late application.
Oh, it's a late application. Okay.
And this has been approved by the Fish Commissioners.
The Fish... Okay. Great.
Any other discussion?
None.
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we have a discussion regarding that second issue regarding Fred Hoistrad request for reconsideration of the commercial clam permit application denial of March 24th, 2020. Jeff, did you had anything you wanted to add to this? Have you spoken to anybody?
You know, as usual, I've maintained communication with the Fish Commissioners. And, you know, I think they treated Fred fairly because I think at that time he was a resident in Essex and he did have an Essex clam permit last year, and I think it was still in up until April in full commission. So, I mean, I think we should follow the recommendation. My thoughts are that we follow the recommendation of the clam commission, and if Fred is now really back living in town and in the house, he can just file for, you know, do the late fee like the person did before and file to the commission again for a license. But that's just my thoughts.
Any other thoughts on the matter? It's my understanding is at this point the Fish Commissioners still don't recommend this approval.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, in reading through the correspondence... Sorry, my cat is eating my phone. It was unclear to me why things sort of took the turn that they did, and it seems like we could either ask him to file late or just submit actual proof to us that he has changed his residence, such as submitting his license and voter registration. So I don't know. I don't know which way makes the most sense to go because it was unclear to me why things got contentious to begin with.
Okay. Mike, is there something you want to say?
I just have to read everything through. If he can prove his residence, then I'd say give it to him, but if he can't, then we don't.
Okay.
Oh, I think, I think in the commission's defense and in Fred's defense, I think things were still in flux. I don't know how much in flux they were, meaning I think he had a license that was in Essex, and I think he was voting in Essex, and he had a, you know, active clam permit in Essex. So it was hard for him to be a resident of this town, even though I guess he owns a home. So I guess he's moving back to town, and I mean, if everyone's amenable and it's a late fee or whatever the clam commission comes up with, I think we're fine with whatever they feel is just... I mean, the flats are down. They're trying to take care of them. This is one of the way they make sure that it's residents only that get to clam the flats, and that's been an issue in the past with a lot of different people, and they've done a good job policing it.
So Jeff, do you think it makes more sense to ask him to resubmit or just table it until he can provide documentation that shows he's actually a resident here?
I mean, that's a very poignant question. If you go along with the recommendation of the clam commission, I think it's for us to turn down and for him to probably file another, probably file for a late fee and try to reinstated. I don't know.
Okay.
But in free fee, English is a good language. You're free to discuss this, and I don't know, is Peter Fattino on at all with us tonight? Is there a clam commissioner on? Leslie, do you know more about the story?
I do know some of the background, yes, and Peter is not on.
Do you care to share it with us?
Do I have to?
I mean, we'll provide clarity and make it easier for fairness.
I can give you, I can tell you what I know. So Fred came in in February to file his application for a commercial clam permit, and at the time when I checked his residency, I noticed that he did not have a current census. So I had him fill out the census with his address on it, and we updated that right away. I did not know that he had an effective license in Essex at the time, and I didn't ask. So the process went forward, and there was question by the Fish Commissioners as to his residency. Number one, because his driver's license, I believe, was still in Essex, and number two, because his voter registration was in Essex. I had recommended when he came in and asked to change his voter registration that he not change it at that time. If he had changed it at that time, he would have been ineligible to vote in the state primary in Essex, and he also would have missed the deadline to register for Newbury. So he would have effectively not been able to vote in the primary, which I don't recommend. I always try to get people to get out to the polls when they can. And so he did go on that recommendation. He did, he has since changed his voter registration and his driver's license to his, I believe, old Raleigh Road address.
So he's currently registered to vote? He's still registered to vote in Essex?
No, he's registered in Newbury.
All right. So the Fish Commissioners are saying that we should have them just deny this permit and have him reapply as a non-resident or as a resident?
No, resident.
Resident.
But he'd have to pay a late fee because he's late in filing.
So what effectively does that? I mean, I don't know if it matters to us, but what does that do to his Essex license?
His Essex license is expired.
Okay.
I'll make a motion if everyone's amenable.
Okay.
I move that we ask Fred Hoistrad to refile his license for a clam permit, and that if he submits proof of his residency and change of address license prior to the deadline that was required for applications on this year, that we not charge him the late fee for that submission.
I think that's pretty clear. Good job, Damon.
Okay. Any further discussion?
When is that deadline?
Jay, I agree with the motion, but I think as a rule of, I think you have to do a roll call vote because we, I don't think we can just raise our hands.
Okay.
When is the deadline? Do you know when that deadline is, Jeff?
March 1st.
Oh, March 1st.
Yes, it's passed.
So it already passed.
What I'm saying is that if he has, if he had done those things, changed his voter registration, changed his legal residence, changed his driver license before March 1st, that we not charge the late fee. And if he waited till after March 1st, he has to pay the late fee.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to do a roll call vote. All those in favor? Damon Jesposon?
Aye.
Michael Doyle?
Aye.
Alicia Greco?
Aye.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And I also vote in favor. The ayes have it. Okay. I'm going to read through a little promo of an introduction to remote meeting. I was hoping we could run it, you know, a little loose like we usually do, but roll call is going to be necessary. This open, you know, the Newbury Board of Selectmen is being conducted virtually consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the COVID turn to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. The order, which you can find posted on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment as it is not a public hearing. For this meeting, the Newbury Board of Selectmen is convening by Zoom meeting like is posted on the town agenda on the town's website. Okay. So moving on, we will stick to a roll call vote. See, we're approaching 7:15. We have a license agreement with National Grid at 7 Morgan Avenue, Tracy. Could you shed just a little more light on this?
That is the agreement for the new police station. So it just requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen.
This for the electric service?
Right, and then would allow you to execute on behalf of the board.
Okay. Damon, would you like to make a motion for the board?
I move to grant a license to Massachusetts Electric Company to install, construct, reconstruct, repair, replace, add to, maintain, and operate an underground electric system located in, through, under, over, across, and upon land located at 7 Morgan Ave. for the purpose of providing electric service to 7 Morgan Ave., and that the chair can execute the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
All right. I will start with Damon Jesposon. Any comments on this statement?
I think we should approve it so the project can move forward.
Okay. Mike Doyle, any comments?
Totally agree with Selectmen Jesposon. Move forward.
Okay. Alicia Greco, any comments?
No.
Jeff Walker, any questions or comments?
Yes. Move forward.
All right. Okay. Damon Jesposon, are you in favor?
Aye.
Michael Doyle, are you in favor?
Aye.
Alicia Greco, are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay. And Jeff Walker, you're in favor?
Yes.
Okay. The ayes have it. We have the... We can kick over to a minute here. The yes-to-eighth conservation, Tracy, is that? I mean, I guess it depends. Do any of the members have a lot of questions about the conservation restriction at the yes-to-eighth?
I'm going to recuse myself from that, Jay.
Okay.
And Chairman Colby, we have Chris LaPointe from Essex County Greenbelt and Zach Farquhar from Borrego. I'm looking forward to seeing what the board has any questions.
Okay.
So you're not going to fit it in?
Yeah, we're not going to fit it in. All right. Everyone hold tight for 60 seconds, and we'll get into the 15 continuance of the Newbury Golf Center public hearing. Damon, are you prepared to make a motion for that? When the time comes, I'm going to recuse myself.
I am going to make a motion, and I will read the letter of request from Eric Sorenson requesting that we continue the public hearing without opening it.
Okay. We'll wait, we'll wait just a few more seconds here in case there's anyone tuning in for it.
All right. It's 7:15 now, so I'm going to read an email received from Eric Sorenson. It says, "To the Planning Board and the Selectmen, I request that the public hearing for the Newbury Golf Center scheduled April 14th, 2020 be continued until mid-May 2020. Thank you, Eric Sorenson, Newbury Golf Center." Pursuant to Chapter 53 of the Act of 2020, Section 17, the public hearing continued from Wednesday, March 4th, 2020, for the application of Eric Sorenson, President of the Newbury Golf Center, Inc., for modification to the special permit for the Newbury Golf Center 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road, Assessors Map, R43 Lot 2, 11, and 4B shall be continued to Tuesday, May 12th, 2020, at 7:15 p.m. at Newbury Town Hall. This is issued by Damon Jesposon, the vice chair. And I believe that the Planning Board also needs to do the same thing at this time.
The Planning Board would follow along with that suit. Thank you, Damon.
All righty. There's no further action required at this time on the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Damon. So now we will move into the yes-to-eighth conservation restriction on Main Street.
Do you want to motion first or?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the conservation restriction from Ruth A. Yesser, trustee of and acting as such, on behalf of the Ruth A. Yesser Trust, UDT David Young, 27, 2013, to Essex County Greenbelt Association, Inc., in the public interest pursuant to Section 32 of Chapter 184 of the General Law of Massachusetts, and that the chair can execute the documents on behalf of the board, and further that the owner shall provide the town a copy of the restriction once recorded at the Essex South Registry of Deed.
Second.
Okay. I am going to recuse myself from this vote. I will go through the, actually first, is there any discussion before we get into the ... Mike Doyle?
I agree.
Jeff Walker?
I mean, you're asking for discussion on the document itself. I'm fine with it.
I am fine with it too.
Okay. And Damon, any discussion on this before the board?
I just wanted to state that I have talked to the town council about this document because there are a number of things that seem to be in contradiction inside the document, and that's a standard procedure where they state blanket rules at the beginning and then make clarifications further into the document. So with that clarification, I'm happy to allow this conservation to be executed.
Okay. I will go to a roll call vote. Damon Jesposon?
I approve.
Michael Doyle?
I approve.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Okay. The ayes have it. I am recused from this vote. Okay. Our Emergency Management Director, Chief Riley, would you like to give us an update?
Certainly. It's been a crazy few weeks, as you all know. The town of Newbury was still holding tight at three confirmed cases, and I really have to credit the cooperation of the public. Thank the public for being extremely patient and cooperative throughout this process. It's difficult for everybody, but the social distancing seems to be working in Newbury. So we're lucky there. We're not foolish. We know that we will get a spike at some point, but right now we're holding steady at three confirmed cases. I really want to thank Deb Rogers and really commend her for the work she's doing. We are extremely lucky. She is thorough, she's professional, and she's a tireless worker. Anytime I call her for anything, she answers the phone right away. She has an educated, well-informed opinion and gives great advice, and basically I've been following her advice for everything. She's, she's been fantastic. So I really wanted to reach out, not reach out, but really wanted to commend her for the work she's doing. We would be in a real mess without somebody as professional as her. Also, I want to thank a lot of the private business owners, especially last week I worked very closely with Matt Kazaki from Tender Crop Farm, and everybody knows how busy Tender Crop Farm gets, and we were having an issue with it becoming very crowded and social distancing not being able to take place. And I spoke with Matt, and he put very proactive measures in place. He went above and beyond what I even asked him to do to maintain social distancing, maintain customer safety, safety of his employees. So I wanted, I wanted to give Tender Crop Farm kudos. We're still checking in every day, and it's difficult. I mean, it's something that has to be managed every day, and they're doing a great job. Also, our beach situation, with the advice of the health agent, we determined that all the private parking lots on Plum Island were nonessential businesses. They weren't supporting the COVID-19 cause at all. So we deemed them nonessential and had them closed. I reached out to the private lot owners, and I really want to commend them for their cooperation and their understanding. It's not an easy thing to do, to tell somebody you have to close your business. So Dave Williamson, Richie Capalupo, and Jeff Christensen, I spoke with them personally. They were extremely cooperative, extremely understanding, and I can't say enough good things about the way they handled that. We do have a signboard on Plum Island Turnpike that advises that the public, the private lots are closed, and the rest of the island, for the most part, is permit parking only. And we've instructed the police to really be militant about enforcing that. It might seem petty if there's nobody around or anything, but it's our experience that once somebody goes out there and it's not enforced, it's on social media that we're not really enforcing it, and then it's just, it's a fiasco. So our guys are ticketing quite a bit, and you know, it's not about pumping up numbers or anything, it's about really sending the message, you know? We haven't closed the beaches, so if somebody knows somebody on Plum Island and can park in the driveway, if somebody wants to pedal their bicycle out to Plum Island, enjoy the beach. Just don't be crowding in the parking lots and maintain your social distance, and the beaches will be open. So it's been working out very well so far. It gets, it gets busy. People are, people are enjoying the beach, but the social distancing seems to be working. I haven't had very many complaints. And the next thing that we're going to have to be tackling as the weather gets warmer is the moratorium on private rentals and like Airbnbs and things like that, because I know Plum Island has a lot, and we're still trying to figure out how to enforce that. I mean, because somebody is at a cottage that's normally rented, I, we can't tell if that's the owner letting a family member stay there for a week or if it's somebody that rented it. It's a very difficult thing to enforce. We're working with other towns, other beach towns that are going through the same thing, and we're trying to come up with a cohesive plan as to how to handle that. But other than that, knocking on wood right now, it's been fairly quiet as far as COVID-19 cases. I just want people to keep doing what they're doing, and I want to thank everybody so much for how patient and understanding and how cooperative everybody's been. It's been really encouraging. So we have a good town, so I'm very lucky to work in this town. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
I do, Mike. It's Alicia. Has the Commonwealth given any guidance on how to handle the Airbnb situation?
Not really. It's, you know, it's almost like an honor system. An owner of a rental property, you know, have to use the honor system at this point, and you know, for the most part, people agree. But I mean, I've had a couple of calls and people complaining that, you know, there's a car with New York license plates and people are out walking around and this and that. And I can't tell if they're family members that came from New York to stay there or if it's rented. And so those are the addresses we'll, we'll be looking at, and we'll, we'll be contacting the owner of the property just to make sure that they're complying with the guidance. So it's, it's extremely difficult.
All right. I hadn't heard that guidance that Airbnbs weren't supposed to be utilized. I know they shut down hotels and motels and that kind of stuff, not essential businesses, but...
Yeah. Unless they're directly supporting the COVID-19 cause, like allowing first, effective first responders to rent them, to stay, to self-quarantine or things like that, they're not supposed to be renting.
Okay. That's clear. Thank you.
And Michael, that's state guidance, right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Riley.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank the Fire Department and our Highway Department. Everyone's been working, doing the best they can to get as much they can done, and also I'd like to thank our Town Hall staff here. They're coming in and out. They're doing the things they need to do. Just thank you so much for everybody. It's been an interesting thing to adapt to here, and we have a good team in place, and I'm very thankful for it. So now we will move on to the discussion of election time. Would you like to lead us into that, Leslie? Or give us your thoughts on it?
I have a prepared statement.
Okay.
And I can even see it now. Well, thanks for helping me out with this. This is kind of a big deal right now, and our discussion and a decision is on modifying polling hours for the June 16th annual town election. And I just going to throw in a reminder that this decision needs to focus on people and not politics. The emergency legislation was passed in March, which greatly increased voting options for any annual town election being held prior to June 30th, and that includes ours. Absentee voting has been expanded to include any person who is taking precautions related to COVID-19. Early voting by mail was added for all eligible voters, and this is a huge deal. It's never been done before in municipal elections in Massachusetts. For both absentee voting and early voting, a ballot has to be requested in writing along with the voter's signature. So for anybody that was thinking that we could just mail a ballot out to everybody in town, it's not allowed under Massachusetts general law. The legislation was provided to us as a tool to allow safe mailing options for voting in response to the pandemic and in consideration of federal, state, and local stay-at-home advisories. Given the current situation and guidelines, our mission should be to urge our voters to stay home, stay safe, and vote by mail. In pursuit of that goal, I created an early voting application, which as of today has been mailed to every household in the town of Newbury. The application and instructions are easy to follow, and a single application can be used for up to six eligible members of a household. And I want to give a big shout out to Minuteman Press for making this happen and making it happen so fast. Early voting and absentee voting ballot applications can also be accessed on our website. Additionally, the Democratic and Republican Town Committee chairs have been contacted. A notice has been sent to the Newbury Port News Republication, and soon will appear on the Newbury Cable Channel and will be sent out via our social media platform. A lot of you I know are only vaguely aware of what's involved in the administration of an election. The process is initiated months prior to the election and ends many days after. Election Day scheduling is based on personnel requirements under Mass. general law. There are a total of eight positions for each of two shifts in an upward of seven hours per shift for two polling locations, totaling a total of 32 positions that need to be filled. Currently, we have 30 appointed election workers, and of those, we have a commitment from 16 to work on June 16th. The number may go slightly up or down, however, there isn't any way to predict that. As a side note, the average election of, average age of our election workers is plus 72 years old. As you can plainly see, we do not have the personnel to fill all the positions for our normal polling hours. Combined with the knowledge that our annual town election attracts an average, which I did an average of the last 10 years, of 1,350 voters, and the expectation of a strong response to early... expectation of a strong response to early and absentee voting by mail, I would urge the consideration of the following recommendations. My first recommendation is to reduce the polling hours to allow for one shift only, bearing in mind that election personnel actually work an additional two and a half to three hours above and beyond the hours that the polls are open. The recent state primary began for most of us at 6:00 AM and ended at 10:30 PM. Another side note, up until 1994, the polling hours in the for our annual town election were 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The hours were increased in 95. However, after searching both Board of Selectmen meeting minutes and town meeting minutes during that period, there was nothing found related to any public discussion, agenda item, warrant item or vote to signify a reason for increasing the hours. My second recommendation is to delay a decision on polling hours until mid-May when we may have a clearer picture on current federal, state and local guidelines, the number of early and absentee voting ballots that we have mailed and have been requested, and the number of qualified election personnel who are willing and available to work on June 16th. The best way to ensure the protection of our community and the safety of our election workers is by town officials and candidates together endorsing and embracing the vote by mail option, which will effectively reduce the need for extensive polling hours. And to quote Joe Biden, "No one should ever have to choose between their health and our democracy." I will now step off of my soapbox and answer any questions.
Okay, um I will start with um with my roll call. Damon Jesperson, do you have any questions for the town clerk?
No, no questions at this time. I I had not understood uh all of the complications that go into it and keeping the full hours. I I do feel very strongly that providing a good opportunity to to vote is important, but I think, as you said, the safety is very important as well. And I'm curious what steps we could take to shift um because it might be nice to lead our state and and become an all-mail-in for our town. So I wonder if that's something that we can pursue for the next election.
Joe Kennedy's already on it.
Well, maybe we should write him a letter of support.
It's probably not going to happen before the fall elections, but I think that is actually what he would like to have happen.
Okay.
I support the motion to table the discussion for the next meeting.
What's that?
I said I support Leslie's move to bring this for discussion up in May when she has a better idea of how many uh mail-in ballots have been requested.
Let's continue with discussions first.
Oh, yeah.
Mike, uh questions or comments?
Leslie, if you need help, um I offer my services. Uh I'm not sure if we can, if that can help. I I'm not sure if I can do it.
You can. I thank you.
But it's like, do you want me to see if I can get people that aren't involved in town government that can do it?
Well, the thing of it is, is um both this on the state level and the local level level, we have been requested to uh train our workers. We have a combined decades of experience with the workers that we have now. But they and a lot of other people are growing very uneasy about being in public, including myself. And I imagine many of you are experiencing the same thing. So in order to try and um take care of what we have to take care of at the polls, um we're going to need people that are willing to put themselves out there that are trained and they just aren't available at this time.
So my response is, can can we get people to um help the younger? Okay, so the older people don't feel that. I'm saying, so if if we do, if I get some people, can they help and be trained in time?
Right now, I think a lot of people are either working from home or not working at all. And in if that is still the case going forward, um that's a possibility. If everyone has gone back to work and back to, you know, normal life, then they there's not there's just not going to be the availability.
Just to put that in perspective.
Typically, that's why we have retired people over the age of seventy working in the polls.
But I just to put it in a little bit of perspective, my daughter in Singapore, they've been hit with a second wave and this isn't going to end soon.
Well, that's my feeling and that's why I've gone I've gone to some pretty extensive lengths to get the uh vote by mail uh issue moving forward. And it's got I'm I'm hoping that it's going to be very well received and utilized by our our residents.
Thank you very much for your efforts.
You're welcome.
Um Alicia, questions or comments for uh Leslie?
Leslie, um I I feel for you because you're at a really in a tough spot of between a rock and a and a really hard place. Um here's a thought. How how long does it take you to train your election workers? Like, is there is there an hour and a half online training they can do? Is it a course that they have have to do?
We do an annual, um sometimes twice, maybe even three times a year, um one to two-hour training with our workers. But bear in mind that most of our workers have been doing, a lot of them have been doing it for decades, long before I was involved. They know more about it than I do.
Right. So my thought is
It doesn't happen overnight.
Oh, I know. My thought is, I don't know if it's possible, but I think it's something, first of all, I I strongly agree with waiting to see how many uh until mid-May to see what direction Commonwealth moves in and to see how many people um send back their um mail-in ballots requests. Um but my thought is where the schools are out, if we could utilize high school students, if they would be willing to train remotely and um and work the polls in place of um our current poll workers who are, quite frankly, at a much greater risk, I I feel, than the young kids. And another thought I I had was um um masks. Um I don't know, I know the city of Boston requires a mask um in public. I know the city of Salem is requiring masks in public. And I don't know if that's something I'd like to have a conversation with the board and see what you think about having an ordinance in the town of Newbury. And Mike, I'd like your Riley, I'd like your input on this. Um if there's it could be an ordinance that we pass to, you need to have a mask on just so you can vote.
I would like to see an ordinance passed that everyone in town that goes out into the public, okay, has a mask. I totally agree with that, Alicia. Also, I love the idea of getting this kid the students involved.
Jeff Walker, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, listening to everyone, I think they're all good. Um certainly, Leslie has always been on top of um election procedures. We're not the only town in this in this position that's going to be creative. You know, as we head into May, there's going to be some creative solutions and I think we should be aware of what's going on and just try to hold up on the last decision to that time period.
Um, okay. I want to add that I think making the assumption that younger people will be safer from this is a dangerous one. This doesn't necessarily affect certain age groups. It affects people with immune system issues as well. So I think absolutely a good idea to wait until May. Um we would be have to be very, very careful subbing in election workers that we believe or assume are less susceptible to COVID-19 because it would be terrible if somebody with an underlying immune system issue.
Right. And I'm not saying, you know, take our young and give them, feed them to the lions, so to so to speak. But um I think that um it might be an option if we can put, you still have to have the social distancing, you still have to have the masks being worn, you still have to have, I think we should have hand sanitizer in front of it. I think everybody needs to bring their own pen. Um and I think we strongly push what Leslie's saying and and make a strong push to have everything mailed in. And then if you get maybe a hundred people coming up showing up that day to vote, we win.
So we don't need to be there for thirteen hours for a hundred people.
There was a motion on the table from J- from Selectman Jesperson. Well, um and I I I just went, can he repeat the motion?
No, I don't think he made a mo- a motion. It wasn't seconded. There wasn't a second.
No, I thought he made a motion. I'm sorry if he didn't.
Yeah.
Uh, I I said that I supported Leslie's motion to have us discuss this in May or suggestion. I don't know if it was actually a motion. Um because I think at this point, we're we're not being asked to make a decision one way or another. We just, we've heard from the town clerk and what she wants to do and so.
Yeah. And another thing I think we should do is really, I don't know, is I see State Rep. Lenny Mares on on the call. I don't know if he knows of um any guidance that's coming down the pike from the state. Are they going to legislate their way out of this or? But Lenny, you're on you're on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, no, I can't.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. No, um there hasn't been any discussion yet. Uh we did get a letter from um Representative Kennedy, um as alluded to earlier. It was a suggestion by him to do all mail-in ballots. Uh apparently, there are some states that do that. I think there are five states that currently do their elections by mail uh almost entirely. Uh but there has been no discussion about doing that here. Uh and it's it's controlled by the state and um, you know, we'll have to have that discussion. I think right now the position is to take a wait and see attitude to see if we do flatten the curve uh and to see, you know, where we stand coming election time. Uh keep in mind, we do have um a primary in September and we have the general election in November. So uh there has been no discussion as of yet uh with regards to any kind of guidance, um you know, for those elections.
Thank you, Lenny.
Thank you, Lenny.
Thank you.
I I'm all for waiting and seeing. And then we can also see what the surrounding communities are doing as well. We can see it's, you know.
I agree with you.
I think we should take a regional approach. I don't know. Mike, Mike Riley, did you have any input on this?
Um, as far as Yeah, I Were they waiting for
I moved that we revisit the discussion of election time and duration during our May um our first meeting in May.
Second.
All right. Uh, uh Mike Doyle?
I agree.
Okay. Alicia Greco?
I agree.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
All right. And I also agree. Thank you for joining us tonight, Leslie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Les.
Okay. Now we have a discussion of the application for the village of Cricket Lane, 55 Rio Pearson Drive by Fields, which was tabled from the March 24th, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting.
JR, does um does, do we have a town administrator report at all tonight? No?
I do.
Just remember, we got to do that too.
Right. So tonight, um Tracy, if you can guide us to the finer points, we're looking for comments basically from the board understanding on the Cricket Lane.
Yeah, um I know Susan's on. I think she provided you all with the copies of the documents and um wanted to know if the board members had any comments that they wanted to be provided at the public hearings.
Okay, I will roll through. Um we'll start out with Damon Jesperson. Do you have any comments to make about the the 40B development at the end?
Yeah, I think the letter that we wrote on the previous submission largely covers many of the issues, but I feel like the water testing that they did for volume was done at an inappropriate time and does not reflect water usage. The road size is too small. It's the wrong location for that particular uh type of development. And I think it's, you know, inappropriately close to Martin Burns, too close to wetlands. I think the site, while I'm not opposed to developing low income, or I'm actually trying to develop low-income housing in our town, I think this is a very bad place for it. And I think the board should submit a a formal letter to that effect, which I would, I think JR could sign on our behalf.
Okay. Uh, Mike Doyle, do you have comments about the 40B?
When I read uh the book that Susan left us, my my big concern is still there's too much traffic to be dumped on Pearson Drive. Um it's like that they, I think they, there was a number of like two-hundred-and-fifty-four cars increased in the course of a day and they didn't think that was significant. That is very significant for a small neighborhood. So that's my main concern. Plus, a lot of people in the area are not comfortable, the residents that live there. And I I talked to Brad Smith last night and it's like, I'm very concerned about safety and the amount of traffic. So that's it right now.
Okay. Alicia Greco, do you have comments?
Yeah, I I really want to go back and and uh go over that letter that we sent the last time this project came before town. Um I also am concerned with the road being twenty-two feet wide. I don't know if that will allow two fire trucks to go down and pass each other side side by side. Um the fact that it's so close to the Martin Burns Wildlife Refuge, um I'd like to know how that affects the discharge of firearms because they do hunt back there. And I think that um that that's uh significant money that the state has put towards um hunting and that this is and cringes upon that. And I think that that should be looked at. Um I agree with Damon as far as the water pressure goes. I don't, I don't see how it can do what they say it does. And um increased traffic, I mean, all of it. I mean, we just need to go back and read that letter because when the planning board put together a housing production plan, I believe it was, and Pete can correct me on this if I'm using the wrong language, but I believe there was a housing production plan that the town put a lot of time into. And we picked certain locations in town that would be amenable to 40Bs. And this particular location was not one of them. And I remember specifically speaking at the planning board public hearing about about that, that this is just not appropriate for as the amount of housing that they want to put in there. So I would like that to be referenced in um our letter to mass housing as well.
Okay, thank.
I think that's everything that I could think of.
Jeff Walker, do you have comments about uh the Cricket Lane, the 40B at the end of Pearson Drive?
Probably just more philosophical than um, you know, really relevant or pertinent to the exact development, but we're just really the victims of the open space residential development being used as an affordable tool to have a percentage of the houses be affordable supposedly and it ends up using sometimes the last of the land that's left in the town that's usually really inappropriate for that kind of development anyway. So it's just, it's a shame. So just the way, it's another tool for people to really be able to develop land that's marginal.
I um, my observations of the project are similar to the last time around. What strikes me the most, I think, is how obtrusive the entrance is where it's going to be placed going right between two homes. Um I'm the right age. I grew up with a lot of the kids that lived on Pearson Drive, the original residents. I know Brad Smith lived down there for years. Um, you know, he's one of the longtime residents down there. Uh Paul Goldner, who I've met through our business, he lives down there. And I totally get where they're coming from. Uh Pearson Drive was a safe place for us to go trick-or-treating. The traffic wasn't that bad. We'd play basketball in the streets. We'd, you know, just do foolish kid things. And it's the type of street that people move on to because they know it's quiet. They want a place to raise their kids that's relatively safe. You slowly get to know everybody. And it it's just not the right place for it. I understand in Newbury, you know, low-income housing, well, it's affordable in the the spectrum of Newbury. It's it's also not that cheap because these units are going to start at like three-hundred-thousand. It's, to me, it's not, it's not that it's low-income housing. It's just inappropriate to add that much density under the end of that cul-de-sac. I I mean, it blows my mind. And, you know, like Alicia said, the implications with the Martin Burns, you know, the houses are getting pushed back ev- you know, slowly but surely every year. And that's a safe place with two target ranges and plenty of woods to hunt. You know, every time you in You know, every time you encroach on it, that safe distance to shoot gets pushed further back into the woods and um, it's too bad. One thing I wanna mention in closing, when we did the sidewalk out there in the woods, I talked to Mr. Bisby from Mass Housing and one thing we should keep in mind as a town, I know it'll blow some people's minds to think of, you know, an apartment building as a way to solve this problem and maybe that wouldn't be in character for Newbury. And at first, I thought maybe it wouldn't be either, but my understanding from Mr. Bisby was, when it comes to affordable housing, a unit is a unit. So a half a house would be the same as an apartment in a building. So the fastest way for Newbury to reach its quota would probably be to hope for or look forward to an apartment building to go in that was affordable. Because as soon as we reach our quota, we have a little bit more power to steer these things. They're not, they're not as, I know we call them either friendly or unfriendly 40Bs. Right now, they're unfriendly because we haven't reached our quota as a town. But if we can find a way to reach our quota at some point, then the 40Bs become friendly and the Planning Board and us as a Board of Selectmen, we have a little bit more leverage on the projects because we will have reached our quota. But um, this particular installation, um, not appropriate, in my opinion.
Actually, JR, I, I, I think that, I, my point is that I don't think this is an appropriate location for any development. I don't care what kind of development it is.
I agree, the fact that it's.
It shouldn't be, whether it's affordable housing, a 40B, if this was not, I don't believe that this would be allowed to go in if it wasn't, it's being kind of forced in. I don't think it's appropriate and I think that it's trying to stick a square peg in a round hole.
Yeah.
And I just think it's wrong.
40Bs endowed by the state like green energy projects and agriculture at some times. You know, there isn't a lot you can say about it or do about it. And um, you know, it can be tough when things affect a neighborhood, that's for sure. So um, Damon, you had a motion on the table, correct?
Uh, yes, I move that we uh, review the letter that we submitted on the last application and that we authorize you to, the chair, to update it and sign it on our behalf. Um, and I'd like to say further before we move on that I've been working with Pete uh, Pacos of the Planning Board and Martha Taylor as the Town Planner to develop some options for a friendly 40B in town so that we can avoid these, these sorts of applications or delay them. Um, and so we're actively working to do that. Uh, sadly, we just have not been able to get it done quickly enough to, to forestall this project.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh.
Are you gonna, um, what, is there a deadline as to when we have to have this letter in by?
Mr. Chairman, can I speak for a second?
Yes.
Just to let you know where we are in the process. So the, the hearing was opened on March 16th, I'm sorry, March 19th, and it was continued to May 21st. With that two-month time period being used to collect comments from boards and committees and departments as well as start the peer review process. So the zoning board has secured peer reviewers for civil, wetlands, and traffic. The application has been provided to all of those peer reviewers as well as the comments submitted prior um, in the, what was it, September, October, I think, Martha? The combined comments from the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board with regard to this project. Um, that has been submitted to the peer reviewers as well. So they're kind of brought up to speed on the comments from the last submittal from a couple of years ago, as well as the comments that we've collected to date um, from all of the departments, boards, and committees. So I would say if you can get us something within the next couple of weeks um, to bring up some of these highlighted points again, that I can get it over to our town council and to the applicants.
Thank you, Susan.
I just wanna make sure um, it, the idea is clear. If we summarize our comments from the meeting today into a letter for me to sign, is that okay with the other board members?
I'd like to review the previous letter that we sent.
Okay.
I mean, I can go back and try to dig it out, but.
I can send it to you, Alicia.
Thank you, Susan.
Sure.
Okay, and if this, and if the final vote on a letter waits till our next meeting, we're not gonna miss a deadline here.
Susan, could you send that to me too, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? You all want it?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be good.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm very familiar, but it doesn't hurt.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, thank you, Susan.
Yeah.
All right, uh, moving on, Tracy, you ready for the administrator's report?
Sure, um, I think uh, all of us can find a lot of negatives right now with what we're all dealing with. Um, but every now and then we see a, a positive that I think we need to bring to everybody's attention. The um, we had a manager's meeting last week and the Council on Aging Director uh, had an opportunity to provide an update. And she mentioned the number of Newbury residents who have been stepping up and um, offering to volunteer um, to work with the council um, as they keep their uh, the, the residents, the elderly population informed of what's going on. Uh, and it's been very impressive to see so many people come forward. Uh, she noted in particular that their biggest focus right now a, a, as a council is on making reassurance calls uh, to the elderly population and um, that is happening daily, well, Monday through Friday, that's happening now of every week. And they're also checking their voicemails every single day um, and addressing concerns of the residents. And these new volunteers are really um, stepping up and assisting with grocery shopping and prescription drug runs and things like that. So um, it is nice to know that, that even though there's a lot of bad going on, we've got a lot of great people engaged in Newbury that are willing to help out. Um, as part of that manager's meeting as well, um, it was, we, each department manager had an opportunity to uh, discuss where their departments at. We are currently working on a flexible work schedule so that a member of each department is in the office one day per week and everybody else is working remotely. And as of last Thursday, there were no backlogs reported um, from any of the functions of our municipal operation. So we have successfully been able to keep the wheels of this government turning uh, much to the credit of the department managers. We did um, receive some other good news. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health has awarded Newbury with another $5,000 grant which will be used to help to defray the costs of the public health nurses uh, as we move forward. Um, Chairman Colby had also asked me to look into Chapter 53 of the Acts of uh, 2020, acting in accordance with the legislation approved on April 3rd. Um, thank you, Representative Mira. Um, we are going to be able to provide some relief from local tax payments. We have elected to extend the due dates for our real estate, personal property, and motor vehicle excise taxes and also the exemption and deferral applications as follow. I wanna make this clear because some of the language was a little bit confusing, but as of right now, the real estate and personal property tax bills, which are due on May 1st, will now uh, be extended to June 1st. So the new due date will be June 1st. And we'll publish all this on our website as well, so people can refer to that. The motor vehicle excise tax bills, which are due on March 12th and May 8th, will now both be due on June 1st. Property tax exemptions and deferrals, uh, the applications for both of those are due on April 1st. They'll now be extended uh, until June 1st, so that the application deadline will be extended to June 1st. Uh, in addition to extending the due dates, we'll also be waiving interest and penalties for those bills that were due between the dates of March 10th and June 1st. Um, the last day for a taxpayer to pay the bill and qualify for the waiver of interest is June 29th, 2020. So the, the relevant language as written in the legislation um, states that payments be made after its respective due date, but before June 30th. So if the bill's paid on June 30th, 2020, it's too late for the waiver to apply. Um, I just wanna make that perfectly clear so everybody understands. So for example, if a property tax bill is due, um, due date was extended to June 1st um, and is paid on June 30th, interest will run from the due date to June 30th. If however, the bill is paid on June 29th, the interest will be waived. So it's, it, the legislation was a little bit unclear, but I think we've got it now based on um, some legal opinions. Um, and again, we'll, we'll do a lot of public, publicizing this and get it up on the website so people are aware of that. And while the Treasure Collector's Office remains closed, we still have a lot of payment options. People can go to um, our website, www.townofnewberry.org and make payments directly through the website. They can mail a check in the remittance to the Town of Newbury, P.O. Box 822, Reading, Mass 0167. Or they can mail their payments directly to um, the Treasure Collector's Office at 12 Kent Way, Suite 101, Byfield, Mass 01922. The offices, all of them, not just the tax collectors, but they're all um, open and available to respond to emails, voicemails. So um, you know, we're, we're all here, we're, we're close to the public, but we're still working. Um, 2021 budget, uh, both the um, 2020 and 2021 budget will be impacted and have already been impacted by the pandemic. The uh, 2021 budget process has already been postponed. Our town meeting, most of you are probably aware, has been rescheduled to June 9th. Um, and the election, as Leslie mentioned earlier, to June 16th. Um, I do expect that we will likely be facing some deficits as we get closer to the fiscal year end. Um, and I will, in anticipation of that, I will be asking uh, the Selectmen and the Finance Committee to approve a special article um, for the uh, annual town meeting and the special town meeting um, to address those, those deficits. The draft warrant uh, for review is now scheduled on the Board of Selectmen's agenda for May 12th. Uh, that will likely be a joint meeting with the Finance Committee as we normally do through our budget, our regular budget process. So we'll do our warrant review and our votes jointly on May 12th. The following week, the 18th to the 22nd, we'll work on preparing and printing the Finance Committee booklet. We have to have the warrants posted no later than May 25th. And then June 9th will be the annual town meeting. Um, in terms of an update on the Conservation Agent search, the job has been posted and resumes are being received. I'm reviewing them. Ideally, we had hoped to have someone on board by, you know, late April, sometime in May. Uh, the interviews have been postponed at this time. They'll be rescheduled and, you know, hopefully we'll be able to have about a month overlap between, before, when Doug retires and the new person comes on board. Um, and that's pretty much um, what I have. I too, you know, like Chief Riley mentioned, wanna express my deepest appreciation to the, the Select Board, Chairman Colby, Chief Riley, and Deb. Um, their leadership has been phenomenal throughout this uh, process. I will tell you, Newbury was absolutely prepared. Uh, but even being as well-prepared as we were with our plans in place for uh, continuity of operations, it's amazing how many issues pop up um, that we'll have to amend that plan for the next time. Hopefully, we won't ever have a next time, but we've all learned a lot. It's been um, it's been really uh, it's been really great working with this team, so very grateful as well.
Thank you, Tracy, and thanks for everything you do. I also wanna thank Susan Nice, um, our IT part. There's always lots of glitches doing things this way, and we're slowly working our way through it, so thank you, Susan.
Chairman Col- Colby, can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Tracy, the um, legislature has um, I don't know if they've provided yet, if it's been voted on yet. Again, Lenny, if he's still here, can you answer this question? Have um, set up a COVID-19 relief bill that's going to be, um, I think it's gonna be funneling state money, probably coming from the federal money um, down to each city or town. Will that, will the Town of Newbury be eligible for some of that funding to pay for some of these expenses that you're speaking to? That we, these cost overruns or deficit spending that you, that you mentioned?
Yeah, um, I, I think Chief Riley can, can talk to the specifics, but we will absolutely be eligible for some of that funding. What, what the problem is, is the timing doesn't always work out well. So our fiscal year ends June 30th. If we have deficits at June 30th, those have to be raised on the 2021 recap sheet. And there may be, it may cross fiscal years by the time the pandemic's over and the reporting is completed. And I don't know if Chief.
Right. Maybe, Mike, you can speak to this, but I, I mean, I think that as long as we can get reimbursed, if it's possible, at some point, so the taxpayer's not out.
Uh, the pandemic's been declared a major disaster for all 50 states. So there will be federal funding and reimbursement and we will apply for every penny that we are eligible for. Um, our core group that speak every day between Tracy, Deb, myself, uh, Deputy Lucy, and Fire Chief Janver and James Sarette, we are adamant about keeping track of our expenses, COVID-19-related expenses, all our invoices, everything. Uh, so when this is over, uh, we will be very well-prepared to sit down with the federal government and justify every penny that we're asking for. Um, usually on these things, it's a, it's a disaster, it's a storm-related disaster and, you know, the expenses are, you know, some overtime to, for the storm and some cleanup costs and some damage to buildings. This is long-term, so I mean, you know, we're tracking when somebody goes out sick to self-quarantine, the cost of paying that person as well as the cost of filling that person's shift and things like that. So those are expenses that we never really factored in any other real, any other disaster. I've never dealt with a pandemic before. So we're, we're trying to really keep tight reins on exactly where the spending is taking place, exactly how much money we're spending on, on the COVID-19-related expenses. And, you know, I speak with Mima every day and they have, they have been fantastic and um, they will guide us through a lot of this stuff too. So, you know, we're, we're trying to keep tight reins on it, but rest assured, we're gonna apply for every penny we can get. But the state fiscal year and the federal fiscal year run on different cycles. So every time we've ever applied for reimbursement in the past, it's never come in the same fiscal year. It, it is not gonna happen with this one either, so um, I don't know the ins and outs of the town finance stuff. All I know is we'll put in for every penny that we can get and however Tracy and the finance team have to deal with it, you know, we'll let the chips fall where they may.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief Riley. It's a, no, it's a few weeks ago, all the department managers were asked to keep track of any COVID-19-related expenses just so as things evolve and funding becomes available already, so thank you so much. Uh, moving on to correspondence.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted two things. It's like, one of the most rewarding things I've done since this started was, I'm working with the Council of Aging and I have a few residents in Newbury Village I check in with every other day. And it's like, it's just little things like going, getting them a Dunkin' Donuts sandwich and getting them milk and eggs and stuff. They have, they, they are so appreciative and it's really, it's really, it feels good to help the Newbury people. The other thing is I wanna thank Tracy, Chief, uh, JR, and um, and the, what of Health, they've really done a nice job with this. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So, okay, Tracy, I didn't mean to, I almost cut you off. Do you have anything left in your administrator's report?
Nope, that's, that's all I've got for this.
Okay, so moving on to correspondence, we had a letter certification dated March 12th, 2020 from the Triton, Triton Regional School District uh, informing us that Newbury's fiscal year 2021 combined total assessment is 9,995,000. informing us that Newbury's fiscal year 2021 combined total assessment is $9,995,282. We also received a letter from Comcast Xfinity. We received correspondence from Jim Moran. We received correspondence from Bill DeMayo. We've received correspondence from Steve Mangian regarding school override. We've received an email from Steve Mangian regarding the Plum Island bathroom. And we received an email from Richard Piccolo regarding some littering problems he's seen around town. Has everyone had a chance to review the correspondence?
Yeah, I think we should talk about a few of them anyway.
Okay, what do you want to?
One of the things on Steve Mangian's, okay? One of the things that I'm hearing over and over in the town is we vote something down and they bring it back. And it's like, I kind of agree with that. It's like I said, we did it with the, we did, we did it with the police station. And I'm sorry, a vote is a vote is a vote. And I, I don't think we should keep bringing things back, but that's just a personal opinion.
I might respond to that, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
If a vote was a vote was a vote, we'd still have slaves in this country. It's a preposterous statement. Democracies don't work that way, and I'm really tired of hearing it.
I'm sorry, it's like, um, what do you, what do you mean a vote isn't a vote? If you, if the town votes something down by a long shot, why isn't that a vote?
I'm saying it's not binding and forever. Slavery was voted into existence. Should we still have it because it was voted once? No, that's a preposterous way to approach democracy.
But know something? In a small town, when the people vote and they vote something down, you do not continue to throw it in front until you get the vote you want.
Mike, they also voted to buy that for the bathroom, but which vote do you want to ignore?
Know something? Maybe it's time we sell the bathroom, that, that area, because we spent too much money on it.
So you want to ignore one vote, just not the other vote?
Know something?
Pick and choose, and Mike.
I'll pick and choose, Damon, Damon, really.
Okay, any other comments about this piece of correspondence?
I feel as if we were all elected to solve the needs of the Town of Newbury. If we had not solved the issue of a police station, quite frankly, our police department would be working in filthy, subhuman conditions. And I think that, I think that we just need to continue to move Newbury forward and continue to solve the needs of the town.
Alicia, my response to that is one thing. We could have, if we listened to the vote three years before, we could have had this built by now.
I don't want to go backwards. I can't go backwards in time. I can only go forward, and that's what the direction that I want to go in, Mike.
I'm just giving you a little history.
All right, any other comments about the correspondence from anybody?
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve Mangian. Is it appropriate for me to speak at this time, or shall I remain muted?
Remain muted, please. Any other comments from the board?
I have a quick question. Are we going to talk about citizens' concerns at all tonight?
No, tonight does no public comment.
That makes eight weeks without talking about citizens' concern, and that's not right.
That'll be coming up on a future agenda to discuss.
But eight weeks is not, not right, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mike, anything else you want to get off your chest tonight?
No.
Okay, does anyone want to discuss correspondence any further? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Is there a second?
Do we want to do meeting minutes or no?
Oh, we have meeting, we have meeting minutes and warrants. Motion to sign warrants.
I move to sign the warrants.
Okay, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, review of meeting minutes.
Roll call.
Review of meeting minutes.
We don't do a roll call on this?
I move that we accept the meeting minutes of March 24th and March 31st, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I thought we had to do a roll call.
We can if you want to make a take all night.
Let's, let's do a roll call.
Just normal business at the end of the meeting. We're approving meeting minutes.
It's the way the governor told us to do it.
Okay, Damon Jesperson.
Aye.
Michael Doyle.
Yes.
Okay, Alicia Greco.
Yes.
Jeff Walker.
Absolutely.
Okay. So that was for meeting minutes. Warrants, Damon Jesperson.
Yes.
Michael Doyle.
Yes.
Alicia Greco.
Yes.
Jeff Walker.
Yes.
Okay, and now I would entertain again a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak briefly before that?
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to state that the DCC meeting has been canceled for this month and that there are a number of business initiatives that are listed on the Massachusetts Government website in relation to coronaviruses so that any of our local contractors, business owners who need relief should be going to that site. It's being continually updated and changed. But I know a lot of people are suffering pretty dramatically economically right now. And there is relief coming from the state, even if it's not all put together just yet. I also wanted to mention that those students who qualify for free and reduced lunches can still get those from the school at this time. I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of those economic relief efforts that are being carried on both by the district and by the state.
Okay, thank you, Damon.
JR, just want to, Bill Demerol's letter about the veterans. We're having a meeting tomorrow night to discuss his issue.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night, everybody.
Aye.